Christine Blauer. Christine McGurk.
Just jump forward a little bit here, so our police officer can help to get out of here, so we'll go right. I have a couple of things tonight. I don't have it in front of me, I was actually made aware of this. Hi, so I wanted to give you the heads up on. Going to be putting Officer John Sandberg up for. Session for them. At last night. He had a mutual aid last night with Paul Ring and Hamilton County. That the John. And I'll. Get what you. Well, they had conversations with her. But hearing some of the conversations with chlorine officers, Officer Sandberg will take us up to night here forever. They're all. So he will be up for a lifesaver conversation, so I wanted to make sure that's. Um, secondly. Getting into. A good situation. Sure you guys saw on Facebook the the press release that came out. I'll kind of give you guys some background on on all this. The last couple of weeks, Ross Township Police Department have engaged in multiple attempts to apprehend multiple suspects related to ongoing investigation. First incident occurred on six five of two thousand twenty five when we were. Fact. Given line of suspect. Threw the scene on foot. Dividing our capture. Second incident was on eight twenty five where officers located the subject again. Tried to detain them during the traffic stop. Suspects again fled disregarding officers' lawful commands. Officers deployed. Able to find them in the area, but we lost them again. Third incident was on nine twenty three of two thousand twenty five. Third attempt to apprehend this suspect resulted in another. Fling of them from the officers, it was a impeded traffic stop. Where they saw our K nine officer. Up in Skyview. And they hit the gas. They were driving from what I'm being told, a good forty five fifty miles an hour through the small area, trying to get away from him. Sergeant Little was able to get behind him as soon as he lit him up. They slammed on the brakes. Female and male fled on foot. Both of them got away. We deployed K nine. We deployed drone in this. Situation. We had multiple officers on on scene looking for them, looking through the area. We were unable to find them that night. Through. Talking to people, getting tips over a couple of days. We were able to get a tip where the male. Subject was up in the Somerville area. Just on the other side of Purple County. While we were doing surveillance. He actually drove out of the trailer park right in front of our officer who was in an undercover car. And we followed him. He pulled into. The post office right there in Somerville. We already had units headed his way. We had Camden Police headed his way. We had Hamilton or Purple County headed his way. We had Butler County officers headed his way. Because the male subject not knowing that Sergeant Little was in vehicle approached the vehicle. To try to make contact with him. Sergeant Little ended up having to jump out of the vehicle. And go gunpoint and detain the guy. Backing up on this, on this gentleman, this. This guy's drug trafficking stems stems from an arrest that we made a couple of weeks ago, where we got sixteen grams of methamphetamine off of one of the people that. That we're working with. It was actually a pretty good sized rock. With cash, multiple packets that he was selling it from. So we've been able to. Arrest him and we've got multiple felonies. On him. Talking to Sergeant Little yesterday, it came up to there's nine different charges going after him. Female that fled. Pursued her for a couple of days after this. Yesterday, we got a phone call that the Butler County Burn Unit was hitting a house in Hamilton. And she happened to be there. So they were able to arrest her. I actually drove over, took her into custody. And now she's in jail too. So the drug trafficking ring that we've been working on for a couple of weeks hopefully has stopped because of good work by our officers here. So. Wanted to let you guys know. The good work that everything is going on. And I also wanted to bring up in this situation, we were able to build some tips off of. The male Josh Davidson based on block camera hits because knowing the vehicle information that he was driving around. We put him in a hot list and we were getting hits on his travel. So we were able to track him and figure out where he was. So that's what led him, led us to his location. So.
Is he a Ross resident? Or a Ross frequenter?
He's a frequenter, yes.
On nine twenty three, when you said you'd lost where he was. Did they actually kind of know where he was but couldn't get in to the building that?
That's what we were assuming, yes.
So the dog did track to a spot.
Dog tracked to a spot back behind Skyview, the Welch property. There's a couple of dis- our businesses back there. The dog tracked around the back of one of the buildings and just stopped. So we think that he got into the building and he was in that back corner and the dog knew he was there. We just.
You had no way to get in.
Had no way to get in.
So the dog, the dog worked?
The dog worked, absolutely, yes. Um, as far as drone deployments go, the last few weeks, we've had seven different deployments. So we're getting a lot of use out of the drone. For multiple situations that that we are in. He's been able to. Track felony warrants on a couple of them. Felony possession of drugs on a couple. And then we've had a couple of trespassing complaints that we've been able to deploy the drone and actually find the people that we were looking for and make the arrest. So the drone is.
Do they have drones that have STEM guns on?
We do not, no.
How much would one cost?
Five hundred. Very expensive. Uh, going to the K nine report. Blitz over the last, from September first to October first, he's had a total of fifteen hours of continued training with Sergeant Little. He's had four deployments, the other night being one of them, and it was. Successful deployment, although we were able to find the guy even though we knew he was there. Just had no way to get to him, so. Said there's four different deployments with him. The four deployments that we've had other than the one at Skyview the other night have been on traffic stops where we've been able to deploy Blitz to do drug searches and we've actually made drug arrests. Probably should have been able to locate and mark these vehicles and we end up making a drug arrest out of them. So getting a lot of good use out of Sergeant Little and Blitz. The detective updates, there's three major cases that he's working on right now. He's got a felony fraud case, a felony theft case, and an auto theft that we're trying to lock up. He's got some pretty good leads on all of those. Hopefully we'll have some of those coming up in the next week or so. Then call for service for us in September. We've had seventeen auto accidents, one breaking and entering, fifteen domestics. Free drug activity arrests. Have one mental EDP, one OBI. That we actually got during our OBI checkpoint. Had one sex offense, fourteen suspicious vehicles or person calls, four TPO violations. A total of three hundred eighty four calls. Self-initiated calls. We've had a hundred sixty eight business checks, eleven vacation checks, ninety seven extra patrols. Hundred fifty eight traffic stops for a total of four hundred thirty four. Thirty three, we're totaling for the year eight hundred eighteen. And I think that's all I have.
You've got almost half in one month.
I'm sorry?
Of your total, of your total activity. One month you've got half.
Yeah.
Busy time.
Busy time, yes.
Activities.
That's. Yes, this is all.
Okay.
Okay. Well, kind of a shout out to the police department, you and and chief for. Getting the grants because the the grants and graces of the people who. Got us the flock cameras, the K nine unit especially and the drone, that was all, none of that was taxpayer money? Yep. And then the the extra patrols, is there any overtime incurred on that?
Um, I will actually have to double check. There's there's a chance, yes, but I'll double check if that's before you all know.
Okay, alright, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Fashioned and cheap, so we'll see you at the next one?
Yes.
Alright, so we're gonna open it up for public participation.
No, we need to go back to proceed. Oh, you're sorry, you're correct, I'm wrong. You're correct.
Okay.
Individually, which to address the board, keep them informed. Get their name and address for the record. What can be made clearly and tightly within a five minute limit? The personal timing that we yield to another, how much should. Practice the purpose, can respect any stop. We have. Herme? Terry? Okay.
Good to be here.
Thank you.
Name is Jerry Hilbert, thirty six sixty three Lay High Road. West Country. But I'd like to have. Has looked at this cornerstone and stuff like this. And I'd like to have an explanation. About the voting ballot. What is going to be written on the voting ballot? For. Our levy in the end of this. How is it gonna read?
Hi.
You know, I'm gonna have an absentee ballot.
It's. The prosecutor's office determines the wording and so I know that it's in the process of being checked and. So that they can get ballots created in time for the elections. We.
Cause.
We use the template that the prosecutor provides to us and that basically is then provided to the board of elections who will then. Modify some things because I did have an opportunity to review the ballot language. Okay, you do have it, so you could forward that to him?
I would copy that.
Also, one of the other things is. Not because I'm getting older, but we're all getting old. For the ultimate. You know, not around anymore. Increase in the taxes. What is this pension? It's our house, our home, our our king place to live in. I'm not saying that. It's trying to get a feeling what it's gonna be. Because. The taxing and all the rest is all up in the air right now too. We don't know. Not one of us can give us a good answer.
It'll it'll cost about a dollar more per day.
You're currently paying on a hundred thousand dollar home, is it a hundred and twenty nine fifty? My memory serves. And it will be an additional hundred and. I have it all in my office. I can give you a copy. It's.
Isn't it in the newsletter that went out last time?
Yeah, it was also in the newsletter that went out. It's. It's, but I can get it for you after the meeting. That's not a problem.
Cause I'm sure other people dislike it.
And the first attempt that the cornerstone made it, putting the information out, they had little to none of it correct.
That's why I said about two cornerstones.
If you give me your email, we'll view this file one.
Actually, right now, with a lot of things, there's a lot of county wanting to get everybody a little bit of tax rate per year. In the state legislation, it's talking about dropping property tax altogether, but they don't have. So everybody kind of like is up in arms, you know, nothing's definite, nothing's concrete. Well, it's the old day. Convince them. Don't have to convince them. If you have the confusion, we don't have to convince them. Don't say it like that. In there. Thank you. Doesn't.
Up rates twenty nine eighty Hamilton Cipio Road. Township. Sorry, I missed the last meeting. Uh, I just want to address David and. Um. They see. Ask you to resign. That we have not forgotten things that you. Rachel, comments you put out in your post months ago. And the displeasure from the audience and your. The other folks who are sitting up there. The other trustees and. Officers. I don't feel you're worthy of your position. I don't think anything's changed. I don't think your remorse has. Resolved anything. Um, so. You know. Yeah, Ross deserves better and. If you don't resign or. Drop out of the race. If we were to reelect you knowing. What has transpired. That'd be a sad day, a sad day, of course, if that's. And and that may be another reason for going just a step aside, so you save yourself. Interrogation. Um, if you decide to stay in the race, I hope you show at the. Public session that's planned for high school, because then you can address some of the questions that we have you asked to your listeners. That's all I've said, thank you.
Matt.
Madison. Madison.
Thank you very much, board, and. I, as you mentioned, I'm Christine Madison. I'm a retired Liberty Township trustee and past Butler County Elderly Services Program Advisory Council member. That's a lot to say. We look at it as ESP in the short term. ESP is my husband, he goes, oh. Got a little exercise sensory perception. I said, no, we're talking about elderly services and. I want to thank the board and your residents for your support over the years. Um, because without your support, we would not have the program we have today for our elderly. ESP is funded by the taxpayers. You, the taxpayers here in Ross Township and throughout Butler County have been very gracious over the years. I've, I have provided you with a copy of the annual report and some other information, so I hope you can take a look at it. But the Council on Aging of Southwest Ohio manages the ESP here in Butler County through a contract with Butler County Commissioners. The Butler County Commissioners have approved the language, or I shouldn't say the language, they've approved. Us going on the ballot this year for a slight increase. I know we all kind of cringe when we talk property taxes. Uh, but here in Ross Township, you have sixty seven individuals who are served by ESP. There are over four thousand throughout Butler County. And the reason, it may not seem like a lot to you, but it's a lot to these individuals. Especially when they can stay in their homes and they can get the services that they need so that they don't have to go to a nursing home. Is, once you go to the nursing, one of the issues is, is that you use up all your money and then you're on Medicaid. And Medicaid for one month in the nursing home costs eight thousand dollars a month. The elderly services, what we provide to the elderly, it costs on average about four hundred and twenty five dollars a month. So you can see by keeping people in their homes, where they feel comfortable, where they have friends and neighbors that they can rely upon. It's a lot, a lot better value for your money and. As taxpayers, and I know as past trustee and I know you all probably very, very closely monitor what it's costing and 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 everything down the road. But again, it's something that. Would, do I want my tax dollars to be paying eight thousand dollars a month or four hundred and twenty five dollars a month? It's as simple as that. And here in Butler County, we are very, very fortunate to have the program we have. Um, we've not asked for an increase in twenty years. So for the last twenty years, we've had the same levy. It's just been renewed every five years. Cause every five years, we have to go out to the voters, because we can only go for five year levies. But I want to give you a kind of an example of of some people here in Butler County that have benefited. This is something that, you know, is near and dear to my heart because. I've had family that has needed some services. Unfortunately, they were here in Butler County, so they didn't get the type of services that we have here. But Ann and Dawn, her friends. Dawn, God love the guy. I mean, he was, he's eighty eight, but he worked well into his seventies as a painter. Then he developed COPD. And she's sixty six. She was working as a quality engineer in the aerospace industry, doing quite well. Unfortunately, she came down to COPD. Cannot take her oxygen tank with her on the floor while she's doing her work. So she had to, she had to give up her job. So they decided they were gonna, since they were friends, they were getting an apartment together because they could share expenses that way. It was much cheaper for them both to do it that way. They relied upon ESP. To help them in certain situations. Obviously, when you have COPD, there's some things you cannot do. They ended up hiring Tina to work with them, where ESP, and Monica, who was their ESP care manager. So they were working with two individuals. And Tina would take them, clean their laundry, drive them to appointments, run errands with them, help them in any way that they could within their, within their apartment. Monica came in at one point in time because. Their rent was going up and they could not afford the increase. Monica was able to find them another place, get them moved, and they were able to to afford to stay in the apartment, in a new apartment. That they could both cope with and end up continuing to live on their own as much as possible. So when you take a look at ESP, we were created for people like Dawn and Monica, or Dawn and Ann, I'm sorry, Monica, Monica's helps quite a bit, but. But these are older adults who do their best they can on their own to foot the bill. So again, you know, eligibility in the program starts about age fifty sixty. If you have certain conditions that you cannot do and take care of some of your everyday needs. We're all gonna get to a certain point. I think we're fortunately, if we're fortunate enough to get to that age, where we might need some help and that, but. You play a very important part in helping to keep these people going. As taxpayers. We're gonna be asking you this fall. To approve. Of new levy. And I know. There's concerns about what it's gonna cost. I tell you, if you go to the Butler County Auditor site, website, put your address in under property search. When, when it comes up, there's a little bar on the left hand side of the page. At the top of the bar, in in some bold. Black print. Says impact of taxes or something to that. To that effect about levies. Click on that, it will tell you if you pass these levies, what it will impact your taxes as. So you can get an act, pretty accurate figure on what your taxes would cost you. So again, I mentioned that we haven't seen an increase from Butler County ESP in twenty years. During that time, our older population has grown seventy nine percent. And ESP is now serving fifty percent more people than we were twenty years ago with the same amount of money. Been very, very frugal, very smart, even during COVID, did a lot of creative, creative work with how we could keep people in their homes and getting them the food and. And services that they needed. But despite the strong fiscal management over the past twenty years, demand has outpaced the resources. And for the past year, ESP has had to manage enrollment, turning away hundreds of seniors who qualify for help. I know when I was up in Madison Township, the police or the fire department, they they said, yeah, we, you know. They had so many people right now that are in their township that are on the waiting list. They cannot get help. And I don't know, Chief, if you've experienced that with some of your residents. But I know they were saying that as a result of when someone has a fall in the house or whatever and they need to get services, they've been able to get them to ESP. After, after taking care of their injuries or or whatever it was their needs were. But again, there are people on the waiting list right now and that is why the county commissioners have taken a look at everything that ESP has done over the years and said, yes, you do need a. You do need a some increase. So the levy itself, we will be asking for the existing one point three mil and a point seven mil increase. The proposed levy will cost homeowners approximately fifty dollars per hundred thousand dollars of property value annually. And like I said, you can go to the auditor's website. On my property that I've been in for forty five years, I look at it, it's adding about sixty three dollars and some odd cents a year to my property taxes. For me to help somebody else out and when it is a, so I maybe that person needs help, I'm willing to spend that kind of money for that service because it is helping people. And it is actually saving us tax dollars in the long run. I know I've talked a lot and shared a lot with a few. Do you have any questions?
I could see generations. Family took care of them. Come on, they're always be in the house till they die. They now, you know, today, in the last twenty five, thirty years, maybe longer. That's not happening. And your services that provide for these people. But then I have that way. If we can't take care of one another. This is kind of a cost. Our society.
Yeah.
Well, I agree with you. It's not much money. I, you know, it's just a slight increase and very slow.
And and the thing is, is that it's only for five years and if, if in five years. Something changes, you know. You can roll back, you can go forward or whatever, but again, it's it's a five year commitment is is all we're permitted to go.
So what kind of a budget do you actually work on?
You know what? Since I have not been on. It's in, it should be in the annual report there. So again, yeah, there's, it's.
It is four thousand people. You have four thousand people and you got that amount of money and of course you gotta pay for. So.
Right.
It's it's not much.
And and the costs have been going up too. That's the other thing is that, you know, we saw the transportation costs going up. We saw the, you know, the. During COVID, there were nurses that we couldn't even get because they were being siphoned off to some special roofs that. We're gonna pay them a lot more. What happens? When you don't have the funds to pay, to pay those bonuses and everything, you don't get the services. So we were, we were, we were doing whatever we could to get the people. That we could service those individuals. We do partner with lifespan. They are one of the groups that we work with. There's a number of other organizations that we work with here in Butler County, as well as other areas that where they have the expertise. So again, it it is, it's, it's wonderful that people can stay in their homes as long as they, in Liberty Township, I went to Uncle's Wheels to. To someone's home in our township. The couple was in their nineties, mid nineties, and they were still in their home and they were thrilled like to know. Now, they were a little lonely and they wanted me to stay and talk with them for two hours, but. You know, but again, it, you know, the Wheels on Wheels provides people with a little bit of socialization, which is very important as we age. So again, these are little services that happen. They're pre, in my opinion, as well as some, some other people's opinions, they're priceless, especially when, when you're working with your parents or your grandparents. And and you love them and you wanna, you want them to be as happy as possible.
Based on a level? That they.
No, no, that's the thing is the services, what happens, okay, so eighty percent of our services are paid for the levy. The other twenty percent are paid by the people that can afford to pay for the services. So if you have a. Medium to upper income level, you may be asked to pay a portion of the services. And that's where that other twenty percent comes into in play. So again, we don't discriminate based upon. Your status or anything like that. We just say if you can afford it, we ask you to pay a portion. We just say, if you can afford it, we ask you to pay a portion of it. If you can't afford it, that's where we foot the bill.
You don't know what that is?
No, I don't. Because there's, I used to be on the, on the committee. I haven't been on it for four years. I've been retired four years. And, and because of my passion and the fact that I've worked with them in the past, they asked me if I could do work on this, on the levy. And I said, sure, I'll be glad to work on the levy. And so I'm going around and talking to all the townships since I was the township trustee and I know most of the people. Any other questions? Okay, and I did leave some additional information so that if your residents need that, or if when Fire Chief, you're out and about and somebody, somebody needs a reference to some, to the ESP, it's there for you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty five work session. I need a second.
Second.
Question?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Move for the adoption of motion twenty five G X one one zero to approve the minutes from September fourth, regular meeting. It was two thousand twenty five meeting, I need a second.
Second.
Question? We'll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Move for the adoption of motion twenty five G X one 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 to approve the minutes from September eighteenth, two thousand twenty five work session.
Second.
Question? We'll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. All right, we'll go to the fiscal office reports.
One second, I'm signing my name here. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Coming around for you to review and to sign, first and foremost, is the certification of purchase orders issued since the last meeting and the certification of checks written since the last meeting. And that would have been since the September meeting. I also have in front of you a series of reports. The first one, as always, with the blue banner, is the receipt, lists of receipts for the month of September. It was kind of a robust month as far as revenue collections. I will tell you, we were, I was able to book in our, our second half real estate rollback report or wrote rollback money on the last day of September. And it got me to thinking and, and I thought something's been weird with the rollback revenues all year. So I looked into it further and apparently we didn't receive our first half rollback. It was issued in check form, which is very odd. We never received it.
So they rolled back.
Yeah, they really rolled it back. And then I called them and they said, well, they attempted to send it to us electronically, which is normally how we receive everything from the state. And that didn't go through, so they issued the check, but we never received it, so they canceled it. And fortunately, I was able to get it. So hopefully in the next week, ten days, we will get our first half rollback to the tune of about a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. So I knew something didn't look right on the revenue reports all along, and that's what it was. So thankfully, the lady kind of gave me a little bit of attitude like it was our problem, but I'm like, nothing has changed. We've received eight or ten dispersments from you prior to and six or seven after the fact, and I don't know what's happened, but anyway, that, the check is in the mail. Moving on, I have for you a management reports for ending, it says August, but it should be September. There is a fund summary. Keep in mind, we're seventy five percent through the year. There's a revenue summary. Again, if you want to see where we're deficient, it would be a property tax and other. This, I believe, is where that shows up. And then also for your review, I have the appropriation status report. This is the expenditures through September thirtieth. And again, we're seventy five percent through the year. I also have for you to review and to sign, I have the preparation supplemental report, which shows how I move money within funds, whether I'm taking money from contingencies or whatever. That is for the month of September. I also have for you to review and to sign the credit card attestation for the month of August. We did add a card in this month. We added a card for Chief Gerhardt's assistant, Michaela. She does a lot of purchasing for the department and it just made more sense for her to use her own card than to try to run around and get a card to make purchases. So that's new on the credit card attestation. Also have for you to review and to sign the bank reconciliation for September thirtieth and the hybrid checking account report, which is in front of you. The to date, we are seventy seven percent over this time last year. I will note, however, in, late in September, the federal, the Fed cut the interest rate from three and a half percent to three and a quarter. So for our October interest, I do anticipate probably a small, a small adjustment to what we have been receiving since the first of the year. So, but we're still, even with that cut in the interest rate, we're still doing very well as far as interest rates are concerned. Earlier in the week, I know Chief Gerhardt sent a rather lengthy email to the Board of Trustees explaining why he felt he had an opportunity to purchase a new car for the police fleet. He initially was going to wait until twenty twenty six, but this vehicle is being held and will not hold it beyond probably thirty days for us, meaning we have this opportunity to spend about eighteen thousand dollars less on the vehicle if we buy it now. And he sent all the details on it. He also explained that wear and tear on the vehicles are showing. This year in particular, we spent our entire estimated vehicle repair budget for the year. We spent it all by May. We had a lot of issues with some of our older vehicles. So he has prepared a purchase order request because it does exceed the amount that can be approved by Administrator Kyle. The first one is for the dealership, Montrose C D J R, which is a car dealership and out of Akron. It's for the two thousand twenty three Dodge Charger. And it is the, it's got the police package on it. It's for thirty four nine. And then he also included a purchase order to outfit the vehicle and in all the ways. And again, I, after talking about this at great length with Chief Gerhardt, we talked about, the money is there, we do appropriate in the permanent appropriations. We appropriate the carryover for such kind of things to happen. There's five hundred and fifty thousand sitting in carryover right now, which would allow for him to pay for these vehicles now, this vehicle now. And then, because if we wait till next year, we're not going to get it for this price. So if there's going to be discussion about this, I told Lieutenant Rogers, we could talk about this now, there's not much more he can contribute. I thought your questions might be more of a finance, on a finance basis. Oh, look who came back. He heard himself being talked about. So if you're comfortable in signing these, this purchase order request, I will tell you that the money is there. There's also about seventy five hundred dollars from the purchase of the last vehicle that's still sitting in the motor vehicle fund that can be used, put towards this. So they, they have the funds at this point, if there's a concern about that.
And you saw three things, two, two of these designed. And you were handing them off right before you.
Uh, the first one is just a motion, the other two are the, yeah.
Okay. Different in the last couple of years?
Oh, yes. Yes.
And then stick it towards new vehicles and stick it in a vehicle.
That's one of the reasons that we're looking at purchasing. Purchasing a brand new vehicle that we did in twenty twenty with the new Tahoe. I know we've got a couple of new vehicles over the last year from Blue Ash. Those are not new vehicles. So like I said earlier, a lot of our vehicles are getting higher in mileage and we're starting to see the problems, having a lot of issues, constantly going back and forth to get them fixed. So this is what we're trying to.
So it's, it's just like anything, any emergency equipment, once you get to a scene, you don't turn them off. So you got a lot of, no miles of running time, probably fifty percent.
One thing that we've done as far as our oil changes, you know, we've started looking at the engine hours versus mileage that we're putting across the wrong scene.
So we don't have a time clock on, on running, on the engine?
We do. Sergeant, Sergeant Little is pulling all that information, yes. And he's been talking to Walder's about all of that.
Yeah.
To documenting the engine hours, so.
So we have it on the vehicle that you want replaced?
Yes.
Four hundred and twenty seven thousand miles of engine hours?
Yes.
And it has a hundred and thirty eight thousand on it?
Yes, 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 that's correct.
That is on which vehicle?
One sixteen.
Chevy or Ford?
Ford is more.
Ford's are built to last that long, aren't they, Keith?
They truly are built for last.
Now, it is also my understanding that particular vehicle will be put on the gov deals, correct? What's where?
So we'll get some back from that.
Get something back out.
Budget is that coming out of the police department or the general?
New police department. So if you're comfortable sending, signing the two, it's here. You guys want to debate, talk about it, if you're wanting to, we need at least two yays on that, two signatures. If you're comfortable, sign it. If not, we can hold it.
Let me ask that question a different way.
Okay.
Is it coming out of his twenty twenty five budget?
No, he did not budget for this expenditure. However, we did when we did permanent appropriations back in April. Any carryover was brought in as a possible, to be expended if needed. Don't normally encourage the, the, the department heads to look at that as budgeted money because it's not. And he realizes it's not part of his twenty twenty five budget, but we have already appropriated it should we need it, so.
Just makes more drug bills.
Well, one of the reasons we're trying now is because of time limit on.
Right.
This particular vehicle, if we don't make the decision quick, we'll lose it. We'll end up having to look for a different vehicle that potentially costs more money.
And by selling the other one, he'll compensate some of the cost.
Some of it. And like I said, we have about seventy five hundred dollars left over from the last vehicle purchase, from the outfitting and all that, that we didn't expend. So I'd like to say we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, but you know, that's what we do. But the money's there. You know, and as we get closer to, I had told him, as we get closer to the end of the year, as we start closing out purchase orders and things, we very rarely ever spend what we're budgeting, you know, so they usually come in well under budget. So, and I will be putting more money back into the police now that I have two of the grant funds I've received dollars on. I will do utilities on payments, putting money back into the police department and paying them from the grant. So all in all, doing very, very well.
So do you put that in a formal motion then?
No, there's no motion needed. It's just if you want to sign the purchase order, sign them. We need at least two signatures to make it though.
So then real, real cost would be forty five minus what we sell it for, minus what is left over from the other car.
Correct.
So maybe thirty three.
Yeah.
What I'm coming up with.
On that, I think, I think Chief put this in the email, if I recall. If you're looking at the total cost, which is the forty five thousand, we're saving roughly eighteen thousand dollars, paying about eighteen thousand dollars less than we would if we went for another Explorer or another Tahoe. So it's not costing us much, which is why we're trying to get it now.
It's a vehicle fix, not. Do you have the maintenance cost for the vehicle that's being replaced?
Uh, not that one in particular, but I could run it. But if you look at the appropriation reports and look under twenty eighty one, at what we've spent in auto, I, I split each bill between auto parts and vehicle repair. Vehicle repairs on the bottom of page six. We have spent ninety three percent of the budget and we have added to it. We've spent fifteen thousand when we originally only had appropriated fourteen thousand. So we have, I've had to move money into that, into that to, to keep that floating. And then if you go down.
Money in from the general?
No, from the contingency fund. And then, or sometimes I move it from somewhere else. If we have, you know, a plethora of, we way overestimated contract services or something.
But this, this is across the board money.
Yeah.
The fifteen three oh six.
Right. And then on page seven, about halfway down where you get into auto parts and supplies, we've spent twenty one thousand dollars to date on, and that's just from the police department. We've had a lot of repairs. Now, I can't say they were all the unit one sixteen. We've had problems with unit one nineteen as well this year. And like you said, we've rebuilt a couple of engines and transmissions to try to keep some of these cars on the road. It is my understanding that one sixteen is not one of the ones we, we did a rebuild on? Or is it? I don't, I can't. Okay.
And one fourteen was the one that ran your engine in, I can't remember.
Think it might have been one fourteen. I can't remember. I could probably have it for you by the end of the evening tonight. I usually, if, if Waldorf tells me which vehicle it is, I put it in the description on the payment. I don't always get which unit. Sometimes it'll just say Chevy Tahoe. I would have to probably pull all the reports, give them to either Sergeant Little to have him go through and tell you which, what's what. That was the one we did.
That's one of our, the oldest Tahoe that we have.
We've shared the love a lot on these vehicles this year.
You're talking fifteen grand. I'd like to know if that was on one fourteen or one sixteen, because that, that was just a year ago, we put that engine in, right? Give or take.
It was either a year or two, I think Lieutenant Rogers.
One seventeen Tahoe, we did put an engine.
And then we had.
One fourteen and one sixteen are both Explorers. Be sure one of them had an engine. I know both of them had transmissions that we replaced over the years. You're talking, you're going back nine, ten years on both vehicles, so.
This was just a year-ish ago, we did put an engine in. I remember talking about, yeah, we're sitting outside quite a while.
It was, but I can, I can find out, yes.
We can leave these here to be signed, should you get all the information you need. If you want to sign them tonight, great. If, if not, that's fine by me as well.
I'm, I'm ready to sign.
Okay, pass it down there. Are you all ready for me to move on? I just wanted to mention, and mostly to the public, that earlier this year, the Butler County Commissioners made a, a move to take the Emergency Management Agency out of its independent hands and put it under the guise of the Commissioners and Fire Chiefs Association, Police Chiefs Association, hospital boards across the county unanimously said this is a mistake, largely through the Fire Chiefs Association. We were made aware that last week, the twenty third, that the Commissioners were going to have their, their consultant reveal their, their findings and potentially make a vote. There was a large presence of township and countywide people from all different agencies, chambers of commerce, city council members, township folks. It was rather impressive. Nineteen people spoke out against the Commissioners doing this. It was rather impassioned. It was actually amazing to witness. And then yesterday, or Tuesday, at the Kemp Commissioners' meeting, the Commissioners voted two to one to not move forward with that. So I just want to publicly thank Commissioners Carpenter and Commissioner Rogers for standing up and doing the right thing and not bowing to politics and leaving the Emergency Management where it belongs, as an independent agency, not subject to politics. And I also want to thank Chief Johns and Chief Gerhardt and everyone for supporting this because, and it, it took a, it took a, took a village to get this done. and it it took a, it took a, took a village to get this done and done correctly.
That was actually on my list to thank.
Sorry, I didn't.
And Administration, please chief support on it.
It was.
It's a lot to my people too.
If the public only knew.
I know.
How much they get involved, you know, and and our, our county EMA is also recognized throughout the state as being the best.
And nationally. We're very, very fortunate to live in a community where we have such an amazing EMA. And and you don't really know that you need it till you need it. And so I just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say this under. And then coming up for your discussion is some legislation. This is just the annual accepting of the amounts and rates for tax year twenty-five, tax year twenty-five, which will be payable in twenty-six. The auditor has sent an, I have double checked it. This is not, does not, does not, does not include the levy that is to be voted on in November. Our two existing fire levies are intact through next year. So this is just accepting the tax, the levies as they are, which would be the two police levies and the two fire levies and then our inside mileage. So there's no big, no, nothing of major proportion on the amounts and rates. There are no changes. They don't fluctuate much from year to year. This is the, this is the, the revenues that we've been living with for quite a while. No changes, no surprises, so. If you have any questions for me on anything that I flathered on about, I'd be happy to entertain.
Pretty good job.
Thank you. All right.
Concerning for the legislation, purpose, resolution number twenty-two thousand twenty-five dash zero four six, order trustees adopt a tax budget for the fiscal year commencing one first two thousand twenty-six. The Budget Commission then certified the rate of each tax necessary delivered by the Board to count within the ten bill limitation tax. The following resolution accepts the amount based as determined by the Budget Commission. Move for adoption number twenty-two thousand twenty-five dash zero five nine, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, upraising the necessary tax levy and certifying them through the county auditor. Need a second?
Second.
Any discussions?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Purpose approval, pay the bills. A motion to adopt number twenty-five dash one one two to pay the bills. Presented through the fiscal office's certification and purchase order. I need a second.
Second.
Call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Administration.
My report is to let you know I have sent the fall newsletter to the printer since it does contain factual information about the fire and EMS levy and information about the new candidate in sight in order to get the newsletters into everyone's home prior to the election. Went on to have that process started. I will send it through to the trustees prior to giving the okay on the newsletter. But other articles that will be included are police department happenings and that street trees are not permitted to be planted between sidewalks and the road and subdivisions and that the road department will be beginning sidewalk inspections. So if the trustees have any other content that you would like included in the newsletter, let me know ASAP and they can follow these. But mailing these letters by, the newsletters by permit, the post offices don't, they have a longer period of time to get them to people's homes, so don't want to have them arrive after the election.
Is there a meet the candidates meeting at the high school? And did you include that on the fall newsletter?
Yes.
Okay, you said that.
Yes, that and factual information about the fire and EMS levy. Also in your packet are nuisances, updates, nothing really substantial there. And then for your consideration are two resolutions and one motion. The first resolution is to adopt a cyber security policy. House Bill ninety-six is requiring all governmental entities to adopt a cybersecurity policy and program. So the policy is a template that was provided by the Ohio Township Association for immediate effectiveness. Then the program, I will be working with our IT consultant, Mark Smith. That is not required to be in place until June thirtieth. I will be working with him at that ready for the June thirtieth deadline. Do you have any questions about the cybersecurity requirements? The other aspects of the cybersecurity implementation is that should we be hit and there be a ransomware payment request that the Board will have to approve that by way of resolution that indicates why payment is in the best interest of Ross Township? And it also requires incident notification. We will have to notify the Ohio Department of Public Safety within seven days and the Auditor of State within thirty days.
Is there, is there certification that we've done what we need to do? That our IT guy has completed what the state wants?
He feels very confident that, yes, we have everything in place. It's just a matter of, you know, putting it on paper to indicate that, you know, we have a program. But he feels very strongly that ours is safe and secure. But as most people would say, it's not if, it's when.
Is what he's saying, will it satisfy what the state wants in House Bill ninety-six?
And actually, they're referring entities to two different best practices. The National Institute of Standards and Technology have best practices and also the Center for Internet Security. So he and I will those two, use one of them as a format for our program.
That done through the biggest, baddest firewalls kind of stuff that? I have that. I mean, as much as I can afford, you know what I'm saying? Because that ransomware is insane.
Second resolution is declaring nuisances, one for a junk motor vehicle and two for excessive vegetation. You have pictures of those in your packet. One of them is hard to see because it is a rear yard, but they're frequent flyer and I drove by and it is back to his usual standards. And then there's a motion for you to officially change the next work session to Wednesday, October fifteenth, instead of Thursday, October sixteenth due to the conflict with the Butler County Township Association's annual educational.
So I got some questions on your nuisance. Herman Road, how long has that truck been sitting? It looks like they got the engine covered up. Looked like it might be working on it, but has it been a month, two months, six months?
The, I was sending an email regarding it on for eighteen.
Has anybody talked to him, seen what he's doing? Because it's not really that unsightly. As you see, he's got everything covered up. He's got no hood, no fenders, no grill, but it is working on the engine. I think we're moving a little too fast on him, but at least stop by and talk to him. And see, you know, what he, you know, what timeline might be. If it's looking like any length of time, they move it into the garage and then bring it back out when you got to work on it. But I I can't see that really being a nuisance unless the neighbor's just. And the other one on Ground Farm, looks like a flower garden, got a little out of hand. And it gets some, what it got, not regweed, but the goldenrod growing up in there, a little bit one stalk. I don't know if anybody has a vegetable garden. This year I've been fighting vines, lettuce and rice. Can't keep up with them. Here again, I really don't see a big nuisance on that one. Now, you can clear that out, but of course, fall's coming along and all that's going to die down anyway.
From the phone, it goes all the way up to the residence.
Yeah.
The side of the garage.
I got the garden.
All the flower bed here, it goes all the way up to the house over, over ten inches tall.
Yeah. Well, it's a, it's a flower garden.
And the truck on Herman Road?
Yeah.
I'm saying even though the people, the complaint may have just sent that in, in mid-September, they may have already been putting up with that for months before they decided that.
Sure, I know, but we don't know that.
And that, and at the same time, there's no reason at all, and I understand this, people may feel aggressive, but Lori has, Lori absolutely should not ever approach a house on her own and talk about a problem in her driveway that should be left up to if, if important sides on it, speaking with the resident, then that would be a poor member.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll go talk to this too. The one, the one down in the yard, got the yard in work.
Is this, all three of these, are they a vote, Lori? Move forward with the, the letters?
I can cross out if you want to remove one or two or you can go.
I know, I do not. Send them all.
You can go ahead and send them. Let's go talk to them. So they can submit these up quick, hopefully. Okay. Consideration for the legislation, the purpose, so I revise code section nine dash six four. Back through the House Bill ninety-six requires a political subdivision to sit and adopt standards, say, against separate security threats and random some, random attacks. Move for adoption resolutions two thousand twenty-five dash zero six zero, adopting a cyber, cybersecurity policy. I need a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Purpose, the county administrators who provide evidence of nuisance and violation exists at the property of Herman, on Herman Road, Ground Farm Drive and Lake Lark Street. Is a resolution declares the property to be a nuisance and orders abandonment. I need adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero six one, declaring a nuisance, a junk motor vehicle at thirty-seven forty-eight Herman Road and excessive vegetation at thirty-nine fifty-eight Ground Farm Drive and forty-sixteen Lark Street. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Purpose, October work session date changed. Move for the adoption motion number twenty-five dash one one three. Change the date of the October work session on Wednesday, October fifteenth, instead of the later scheduled date of Thursday, October sixteenth.
Second.
Call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yeah, and Fire Department?
Purpose to monthly fire audits and the inspection report. Had a hundred and twenty-eight calls for service. EMS and sixty-five fire. Fire completed ten new inspections and four re-inspections. Unity engagements we've had this month. We see our safety trailer down at Elba this week for doing their annual fire, fire safety week. Next week it goes to Morgan Elementary and Towne Fire Department. We also had a touch a truck event at Ross High School. Our engine down to that. Personnel updates. Firefighter Scott Houston successfully completed his fire and emergency service instructor course at Charlotte Oaks. So he is now state certified fire EMS. And Zach Timmons completed his training and he is now certified fire and explosion investigator. Did that all on. I've had a couple of resignations this month, Ryan Lucas and Steve May. And three of our personnel went on leave of absence due to starting new full-time jobs and calling at school for time is limited. The Department of Commerce has released their March grant application. That's for radios. It's, we can get up to fifty thousand dollars for non-matching grant. I would like to work on putting that grant in to get some new portable radios for. That's due October twenty-fifth.
How many radios would I give you?
I'm still working on how many, because it, it breaks it down on how much each, the radio cost, the antenna, the charger, it breaks everything down, so. Spend some time working on. The next thing I want to look into is our billing EMS calls for the non-residents. We bill our, we bill everybody through Med Account Management of our EMS billing. They send their insurance and we get whatever the insurance pays. With our increase of mutual aid calls and just increased calls overall. That'd help recoup some more of that money that we're spending on calls. For the runs we go into Hamilton or Morgan or Riley, we'll hard bill them through the Attorney General's Office. That's through our Med Account Management. They take care of that. They will hard bill, so we recoup a hundred percent of the cost spent on.
In other words, when we go to Hamilton, Hanover, Morgan, and we have a squad run, we take somebody in. So we do charge them, but we do not charge our own residents.
We charge, they charge their insurance.
Yeah.
We charge everybody's insurance. And we take whatever the insurance covers. We don't go after the rest of it. I would like to start doing that on non-residents.
Yeah, I agree.
That's something I can work with our billing rep, get that process going.
So our, our grant money for the radios, our Fire Department, our Police Department, as well as our road crew, our head, people ahead of that have gone after grants and have been very successful. So, you know, taxpayers' money is being saved when we go after grants. And our department heads doing that to save the taxpayers a lot of money. And I'd like to show our appreciation for that because it's, it's, it helps us all out. Because the money's out there, we just got to find it. And with our head, department heads going after it, that's, that's a feather in our cap that we have people that are willing to go out and do that and make it, make our services to the township even better. Okay.
Reminder, our open house will be October eleventh at Station one one two, seven to two. Say welcome everybody. Couple items for legislation. The first one is the Bureau Workers Comp Safety Intervention Grant. It's for the firefighter exposure and environmental elements. It will be used to purchase a turnout gear dryer. It's a five to one patch for us, so it'll cost us about twenty-three hundred dollars. It's about fifteen thousand. So anytime we have a fire, we wash our gear and right now we have no dryer. So it just has to sit in the bay and eventually dries. Sometimes takes a while. This dryer should dry them in two to three hours. In service, if they have another fire, use that for.
This isn't just like regular tumble dryer, right?
No, it's a cabinet. It'll hold six sets, coat, pants, boots, helmets, gloves, everything that we use.
Just like the hose dryers.
Yeah, like big, big oven. The second one, I believe there's a copy of this agreement. Packet, if not, I have a copy here. It's accompanied Pennsylvania Fire Recovery Service and they, Fire Departments, they build insurance companies for fire responses. Right now, we don't bill for fire responses, structured fires, auto accidents. We don't get any money recouped from any of those services. This company bills the insurance company and they take fifteen percent off of whatever they collect. We get the rest, so there's no upfront cost. It's a year agreement. You can try it for a year and see how much. We can try it for a year and see how much, uh, revenue that brings in for our fire calls. And it, it only bills the insurance company. They don't, they don't go after the resident or anybody for. And third, uh, the two part-time firefighter medics I'd like to hire. Savannah Strack and Jonathan Hester. Ben is full-time firefighter medic with the city of Hamilton. And Jonathan is a full-time fire medic with here in D. A. They all have about eight to ten experience. Get some experience personnel. All I have.
Considering from legislation, purpose authorize the application of safety intervention grant funds through the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation for the turnout gear, blind kit that is used in the fire department. Adoption Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero six eight, authorizing application to be, uh, to the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation for the safety intervention grant for firefighter ex, uh, exposure and environmental ailments for the purpose of acquisition of the equipment and authorizing the fire chief to execute and acquire the documents connected with the grant application. I need a second.
Second.
Discussion. We'll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Ma'am. Authorize the agreement with the P A Fire Recovery Service to bill insurance companies for the fire responses. Move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero six three, entering into an agreement with the P A Fire Recovery Service for the provision of billing services for fire incidents and authorizing the fire chief to execute the agreement. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. We'll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am. Purpose to approve the hiring of part-time firefighter and medic Savannah Strack and Jonathan Hester. Move for the adoption, motion two thousand twenty-five dash one-one-four, to approve the hiring of Savannah Strack and Jonathan Hester to addition of part-time firefighter medic at the rate of twenty dollars per hour. These employments are subject to completion of the pre-employment testing in accordance with the uh, certain, cer- certain sampling summary and rate, pay rate of resolution. I need a second?
Second.
Discussion. We'll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am. So our road department, our department head is home sick. Not that he's home sick, he's just home sick.
I can report on, uh, some of his items. I do know the letters regarding to property owners along the fence line for Venice Gardens Park for them to cut back, uh, the overgrown vegetation there. There are three property owners, two of which I have confirmation that their letters were received. The third is waiting for them to pick up their certified letter, but they have thirty days from the date of notice to take care of that. I am aware that the road superintendent is beginning sidewalk inspections, and as I mentioned earlier, information about that will be in the newsletter. The curb replacement estimates, that is for two thousand twenty-six, and I am aware, he did express to me, he is having a difficult time getting estimates. Apparently, uh, the work that we need to be done is not really looked upon as a sizable project. Uh, I'm not quite sure what all he was going to report to the board, however, it is a project for two thousand twenty-six, so there's no urgency that topic. And then he too has two resolutions regarding two different grants. The board to consider is, uh, accepting a signed grant from the Ohio Department of Transportation. This particular grant, he itemized the list of signs. The signs will be delivered to him and the ODOT will pay the vendor, so very little requirement on the townships in, except to put up the signs. And then the second resolution is to authorize submitting an application for Butler County C D B G funds to pave, uh, streets here in Ross Township. And this is the estimate that we just received from the engineer's office, and that's the street that will be included in the grant application to the board. That I thought that I.
To prove that accept the forty-five thousand two hundred and seven dollar point six-six grant from the State of Ohio Department of Transportation for safety science. Move for the adoption resolution two thousand twenty-five dash six-four, accepting a grant from the Ohio Department of Transportation for its two thousand twenty-six Township Safety Science Grant and authorizing road superintendent to execute said grant, terms and conditions. I need a second for that thing, if we don't call.
Uh, trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am. Purpose is application cycle two thousand twenty-six, community development block grant funds are currently underway. The road superintendent requesting permission to apply for two thousand twenty-six program funds to assist with the essential cost of paving specific roads, excuse me, sorry, in our township and following resolution grants that, uh, permission. Move for the adoption resolution two thousand twenty-five dash zero six five, authorizing the application for the grant for the Butler County Department of Development for Community Development Block and Fund to assist with the essential cost of paving specific streets of Ross Township. And authorizing road superintendent to execute any required documents in connection with the stand application. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion. Now, just for, for the public, just, just to know, um, the cost of this is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And the streets that are going to be, uh, considered for this is Main Street, Cross Street, Maiden Street, Sunshine Drive, Larry Lane, Clemmer Drive, Narrow Street, and Clark Street. So, you wanna know what's going to pay? Complete paving, or is that like a skim coat or something like that, or are we actually putting, taking some up and putting some down? Because sometimes we just put down a skim coat like a, a driveway sealer.
As far as I know.
Right. We'll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am. So the police monthly reports, we already had that. So township business opened. Then from the administration, anything from the board? Have none. Nope. New business, confirmation of trick-or-treat to be held on Friday, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, from six to eight P M. The only thing I'm gonna say about, we know when Hamilton's gonna have theirs, as we always felt like paid attention when they have theirs, that he will come down and inter, flying with our, any stealing.
Long as I've been associated, we have always done it on the thirty-first regardless of football games or whatever.
Okay, because there will be a football game that night too. Okay, we'll stick it to October thirty-first. Eight P M, anything else from the board?
I will not be at the work session in October, so I will be on vacation. Um, so you will probably have to have a motion at the top to have Administrator Kyle serve in my capacity, so.
Announcements, the community is invited to attend the Ross Township Board of Trustees Candidates Forum on Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven o'clock. Uh, the event will be held at the Ross High School Performing Arts Center. This forum will provide residents an opportunity to hear directly from the candidates, learn about their positions on key issues and gain insight into their vision of the future of Ross Township. Information will be also be provided on the purpose of, uh, Ross Township Fire Levy and Emergency Medical Services. Um, all are welcome to attend. Anything else from the board? Correspondents, Ohio Department of Liquor Control sent a notice to the application for a new liquor permit from Meadowbrook, oh, they're opening up again? Uh, Event Center LLC on Venice Boulevard. Does the board request a hearing on this matter? Are we, but as far as liquor licenses, are there limitations to our residency? As far as how many liquor licenses we can have in our township? And, and how about it in a certain area, like a condensed area, so we got there, like gas stations, I'll be like, that's a small heavy liquor, like we got, we got bars and stuff like that. Is there any limitation on that as far as in a condensed area? Where does that permit go to? Does that permit come directly to us, or will that go to the county?
It's the state.
Do we have anything to say about it?
You want to have a hearing?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to know what's going on.
Do I have the property sold?
We, I don't check.
Yes. Traditionally, we do not. Unless there's a problem.
Calling himself Meadowbrook Event Center. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd like to know what your future plans are for the facility, are they upgrading? Going bigger?
Who submitted the application?
I haven't heard anything about it.
The owners.
For somebody to pop out of.
You are.
And, and again, this property did at one, one time did have an active liquor permit, um, probably, what, through the sixty, seventies, eighties, nineties and
I think this trade is very.
Sorry?
It's trade, it's right from one.
And really, they sell rocks.
I think we can question.
Just looking to a little bit further before we pass. Pick it up next meeting.
Um, I think there's a deadline to respond.
Ten sixteen.
That'll be your next meeting, or no, it'll be the night, your meet the night before, but.
I think there's only three people that could sign it, one fiscal officer.
Just because they have a timeline, it doesn't mean you have to fill.
If you don't respond, they will hold, they will go forward without your input.
So have we got? If we, you know, we take a vote on it, not to deny it or go ahead and accept it. I mean, if we have responded, I have responded. We didn't have much time left.
I, I, again, I don't know as trustees if we have the authority to deny it or okay, and I think they're letting us know it falls back on the police car where the police chief and his administration have a problem. Um, and basically that falls back if, if there's been a problem with that address before for alcohol, go ahead and, and deny it. Uh, then my question is just to, who's taking over? What's their intent? Are they, are they growing, remodeling? Um, but I'm not a potential, we can, we can, I don't think we have a power to stop it or.
But if you, if you guys want, if you guys wanna discuss it, I can, I can sit down with chief and have an, I can sit down with you guys. We can discuss it before a decision is made. We have no problem doing that.
You can, you do, that'd be great. That way, if we can't do anything, then. Do you need to speak with us individually?
That's, that's true, we'll buy sunshine. Or just have one representative from the.
The chief's coming back, what?
Could be in the office.
Uh, okay, anything else from the board? No topics for October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five work session, Venice Mixed Use Overlay District, next steps. Topics needed to the board. Closing action, there being no further business before the board. Wait a minute. On, on that.
You were first.
Okay.
You probably have the same.
On the Venice Mixed Use Overlay District, do we have, uh, Greg Young coming to that?
Yes.
And David Fair from the county? Um. Is there anything that should be done publicly to invite people here that might wanna know what's going on down there? Are there any residents from the proposed district that are gonna be here?
Yes, well, one for sure, she was gonna talk to her neighbor. I received, the board mailed a letter telling people if you're interested in knowing more to contact township, who did. Um, they too don't know any additional information. So the board, you all discussed it last time, and, you know, kind of said, I guess, nobody's carrying the ball forward, and I thought, well, nobody knows where to carry the ball. So, uh, I called the two people that had responded. One was a little more eager than the other, um, but I said, you know, the the board doesn't even know what this requires, so maybe we could just get together and have a discussion about what it may or may not take. And, uh, one was willing to do that, and she said that the other person that had called me was her neighbor and that she would try to get her neighbor to come. And so, um, reaching out to David Fair. Uh, I hope that the discussion at the work session, that at the end of that discussion, he will tell us what maybe the next three steps are.
Would it be worth just typing up a quick letter for the, well, there are eighty-some people?
He did that.
And just say, hey, there's a reminder, there's gonna be a, the next discussion's happening. If you wanna come, come. I mean, it's just a letter. A reminder type letter. Add eighty being sent, add only two, hit two responses. And they were on the positive side.
They were on that the letter sent the call, though we're calling.
At least they responded. Yeah. Hope we could send that letter out, maybe just. Closing action. Keith, did you have anything else?
Um, to add on that knowing, um, Lori answered that question, I, because I thought that the last thing we knew, we couldn't move any farther. We're only two, two residents that, um, were, were willing to reply back, and due to the fact we, our local zoning failed and stayed at the county level, but we didn't have any authority to go forward with that, but I agree with listening to the, to the gentleman that we have lined up to getting more information. Um. I think that the topic needed for the next board session, we'll continue on with, uh, police chief's idea of, um, security in the back lot lighting that up a little bit. Um, from one of the electric panels, there is a sticker from Gunther Electric. I can only imagine the gentleman that worked a lot on this building with the Treger family would have been Bucky Gunther that lived on Herman Road, who, um, is, uh, unfortunately is not working with us, passed away years ago. But I'm feeling maybe his son or a family member is still with the business in their office in Fairfield. I sent them an email, if somebody could get back with me, see what, um, the fee what they would have of coming here and trying to locate what switches would work those lights in the back. Every, every, every panel in this building, and I think I've seen either five or six, everything's on. But there's gonna be a switch somewhere for them backlights. There is two timers that I think are associated with the front lights and the backlights. Um, going ahead and bypassing them to on, nothing came on, so.
Do you have a sense of light sensors?
It's a time. It's your timers on the wall back here. But, so, I'd like to talk to him, see if he worked with his father, and if he may know more, and we'll go from there in two weeks.
Closing action. Is there any further business to interrupt for the board?
I would just like to say that we've mentioned over the years doing, having some sort of rough drawing of this building and where all the utilities are located and all the, and I brought it up and brought it up and brought it up. We need to know where all the breakers are. There's multiple. Where the water shut-offs are, where the electric shut-offs are. If they're in case of an emergency, this building is so patched together. There is no absolute drawing that says go here when we have people from the generator company come and they say we need to inspect this. It's just depending on who is here at the time.
Yeah.
You're walking around looking, going, I don't know, this might be it. I don't know. I've asked and asked and asked. I think a drawing needs to be done, and, and all these services need to be indicated as to where they are tacking on to what Keith just said. We have, we have things and we don't know what they are, where they are and how to turn them on.
Well, the electric.
Or turn them off.
The main source is coming in. There's gotta be a main source coming in. And is it just one, then we're gonna have one circuit breaker.
Well, you would think there's one set, but there's at least three breaker boxes that I can think of.
Might come off of another.
Absolutely.
Wherever the main one's coming into the building, I'll look at that and see where that's at, and then the other ones will be feet that off of that.
It's, we're going on five years with this conversation, and it's, nothing's ever gotten done. I think if anything, that would be a good topic of where everything is and how to turn water off and how to.
You talked to Mr. Gunther, is that something you would?
Yeah, see if he'd work, been in the building, if they have anything to file, like their office, something they worked at, he did.
Okay.
Maybe more action there. And I, but I just think it's gonna be a nameless type job.
Move for the adoption, number twenty-five dash one-one-five, for the adjournment of the meeting. I need a second?
Second. Second.
Go call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am. So our next meeting was the work session, October fifteenth, two seven twenty-five, six across the building, which is a Wednesday.